The great buildings and stores, I do believe they will come to downtown and they will shop. And it will enhance our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Stephen Cross.
For the record, my name is Stephen Cross. I live on Cradle Road here in Our Heights. And my wife and I own a business in Town Runway at Forest. We're relative newcomers two years ago. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and residents for listening to what I have to say today. I'm going to try and package my thoughts in three parts. I'm not pro this development, but I am for development. I just think it'll play over here and I'll get into that. The first part of my comment is personal experience. Both my wife and I grew up in small towns. Myself in Stittsville, Ontario, and her in Acton, Ontario. And we've both seen this movie before. And it did not have a good ending. It destroyed the downtowns and those communities. The more malls that went up on the outside, basically roamed the downtown core to the point where it all became donut shops and dog grooming places and that was it. So, personal experience, even Salt Lake City, when you go back to 2002, Salt Lake City built a huge outdoor mall, forty minute walk from downtown to Salt Lake, under the feeling, similar feeling, that people would make the walk that was still part of the community. And yet, Salt Lake City downtown was decimated. It's still trying to recover from that. So I just haven't seen any evidence personally that this kind of thing works, no matter how much we hope it would. And further that point, you know, I went on the internet three or four times for three or four hours trying to find any study, any expert, anywhere, who says this is a good thing to do for us, the town community. I couldn't find it. So, that brings me to my second point, which is, you know, stepping outside my own shoes as a business owner downtown and taking a sixty thousand foot view of this, to me, council space was an incredibly tough decision. I'm glad it's this council because I think we've got the talent here to make a good decision, whatever that is. I truly am. But it's an incredibly tough decision. And when you look at it from sixty thousand feet, there's only four possible outcomes here at the macro level. One of those outcomes is it works and it doesn't impact downtown. Great. Another outcome is it works, but it hurts downtown, destroys it. The third outcome is it doesn't work and it's empty and got ferment signs out there, which makes it an ice store that hurts our reputation even more than the make and lot does. The fourth outcome is it works and so does downtown continue, but it's mediocre. We delude ourselves. So, when my wife and I look at this, we go, okay, if we're making this decision and there's four possible outcomes and there's no evidence to say that the good outcome is going to happen, why are we rolling the dice on the twenty-five percent outcome? Which brings me to my third piece of comment, and that's my own personal fears. And, you know, with this, I'm not speaking as a strategic person. I'm speaking strictly as a small shop owner. You know, we moved from Toronto, we invested. We were welcomed, even though we were competition. We are a bit of a duplication business, although I would say we carry a lot of different stuff and we improve in that. But we poured into it. And after nineteen months receiving positive results, I expect I'll be able to take a paycheck in January. And whatever vibrancy folks think the town has, I mean, it does have that vibrancy, but we all know how low the down periods are. October, November, April, and May, the drop offs are mind numbing. And, you know, for anyone to think that any business downtown can take a thirty percent hit and survive, you're dreaming in absolute technicality. It will not happen. It will go dark. I made the comment to my landlord that if this development did go through, I'm almost forced to take space in it to protect my market share downtown. And then I'm playing a real dangerous game with the capital we have to play with. And what happens if it works on the highway? If it doesn't, downtown suffers. Then I opt out of that lease and it becomes a problem. So for us as a family, it's incredibly stressful that this thing goes through. I know some residents can't wait to get at cheaper groceries they think will happen with another grocery store. And I'll tell you, I was at a breakfast meeting on this topic and Mike from Scookham made a great point. He said, you know what? First thing you do as a retailer is you buy market share with price. And that's exactly what a new pharma or a new grocery will do. They'll buy market share with price. And then, once they have that market share, it'll be over. And I grant you that, you know, some pricing in town is a little weird. But honestly, be careful what you wish for. Careful what you wish for. The established businesses in pharma and grocery employ a lot of people. They're good employers. And I think, coming from Toronto, I don't think the prices are that bad, folks. I think we got a heck of a deal in this town, all things considered. Finally, I would say, you know, the original plan, and some folks made comments like that today, the hotel plan, I think is a great plan. I don't know how much effort went into selling that to hotels. Maybe chains aren't interested, but maybe some mid-level entrepreneurs with capital would like to do that. You know, I see that space and I go, wouldn't it be great if we had more bed space? We certainly need it. What about a convention center? What about a climbing gym? What about a state-of-the-art something that fits in with what we're about as a mountain town that actually maybe focuses on the summer season? This year in my store, I heard so many people say, oh my gosh, I finally stopped in Revelstoke. Love it here. Next time, I'm going to stay for two or three days. I also heard from people, I want to stay another night, but I can't find a room. There's a lot of that. In peak season, we are under bed in something fierce. Anyway, one final comment. You know, I think as a, I'm a social capitalist at heart. I get the whole idea as capitalist society, as a democratic democracy, as open for business. We don't want to dictate details. But I think that's parking it in the wrong theater. I think we can and we should work closely with developers on exactly what we want. I think that comment about if you want to have a great town, define what that is and go and get it. Find the right developers for that, find the right businesses for that. How we do that is more important than dictating. And I think the previous council erred dramatically in how they conducted the business of setting a style, not in setting a style. Thank you.
Next person on the speakers list is Virginia Thompson.
So, I was about to spit out of the action. That's my granddaughter, so proud of you. So, I'm Virginia Thompson. I live at ten seventy De Shaddell Crescent. I'm not a business owner. My husband and I lived here in 2006 for lots of reasons, like grandchildren and so on. But we were so taken with Revelstoke. We wrote our friends about it, we talked about it. We called it authentic. This is not a bedroom community, but then we are drawn to our friends. This is a community that's old. It has history. It gets our heritage. It's got everything you want, but it's real. Because it's real. And we've seen a lot of change. I mean, Steehill came after, we came shortly after. And we had a lot of concerns about how we build a town. But for a lot of reasons, it seems to have gone fairly well. I think the apartment, maybe because of the downturn, it slowed it down so that it hasn't overtaken the town. It's with more. So, we looked at this strip mall thing, and I shouldn't call it that. That's sort of like calling the oil sands tar sands, but it's... We have seen, come from Ontario, and, you know, we have used to drive into rural Ontario regularly. We have seen the Silverstone again. So another gentleman said, you know, little towns that were charming and cool, and then they suddenly thought, oh hey, you know, it's so hip and stuff. You know, we'll build a strip mall and we'll get rich and we'll make money and everything will be great. And we saw them die downtown, one after the other, after the other, after the other. And then there are towns like Whistler, you know, with the cookie cutter town. I mean, in contrast to Revelstoke, it wasn't a town. It had no history, it had no charm. No charm, really. I mean, nature was built something fashion gone European town. So it was fun and it was charming. But after a while, if you go to a few natureless resorts, you realize you're looking at the same thing as another. Again, it's a cookie cutter town. And after a while, people realize that. And when people come into Revelstoke, as somebody just said, they all loved it because it's really charming. And we should cherish that. I'm not really saying the things that other people haven't said, but I, we feel strongly about that. We're not against development. But I think development should be done very, very selectively, very carefully. We don't have to be capital handed to anyone. We can say, you know, we want something that fits in, that, I mean, you can't necessarily, I guess, designate what's going in. But you can decide with your, so we need more old debtheads or we need this back. And people decide very bluntly. But if something like that along the highway, to me, is just going to desecrate something that is a real treasure. And, um, yeah. And hurt, as people have said. People won't do it. So that's, those are my comments. Also, if you get a lot of chains or big box stores, and you have some of that on the highway, but, you know, these profits don't stay local, but they go back to the multinationals. It's much better to have one-off stores or almost one-off stores in town where the owners live here and spend their money there. Keep the money in town. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Robert Foyeck is the next speaker.
Mayor Council, Robert Foyeck. I am a developer. Came to Revelstoke in nineteen ninety. Started working on a resort. And still here. I'm not here to advocate protecting businesses that exist today from competition. Competition is good. Same way as with competition, but, and it's more a matter of, you know, what you should be doing as a council, making this momentous decision, in my opinion, going forward. But I think back to, you know, as a developer, I was trying to get the resort going and this kind of thing. And all I ever heard from the town folks was, boy, we really want a gondola. We really want a gondola. We want to get people off the highway and come into town, this kind of thing. And so I thought, wow, I have the answer. I'm going to put the gondola on the highway, right next to the subway. We went from La Habana and was premium. And then, so I floated this idea by Mark McKee. He was a very, very instrumental guy in resort going. And he actually had the idea that the gondola should be on a ski hill. And Craig, an idea, he was way smarter than I was. So, that's where it ended up.
You think I'm just good looking?
That's where it ended up. My point is, you put gondolas on ski hills, you put highway uses, motor car uses on a highway, and you put pedestrian uses and pedestrian generators in a downtown. It's a terrific, terrific community, terrific downtown. The town was a huge part of what made the resort possible. I didn't say profitable, but made it possible. And I don't think that we can take a chance on not maintaining the vision that we have going forward of where things should be. The one thing that stops people on the highway and encourages them to actually come to town are hotels. Steve Black is the highest regarded gentleman, one of the best developers I've ever met. And he had his own hotel for a reason because that's where it belongs there. Now, what a lot of folks maybe haven't seen, all the movies in the world, I mean, development movies have developed in six provinces and three states. And I've seen what happens when something like this thing on the highway happens. But this idea of the adventure part is going to have a way more impact, positive impact in this community than you can imagine. It's really going to be something. But those folks are not going to stay for one night. They're going to stay for two nights, three nights, which is what the holy grail of development in Revelstoke has been for the last twenty-five years. And we have talked to Jason about this, but he can't go and put hotels in really great because there's no infrastructure there and they go broke in the winter time. They have to be on the highway. The best place, where Mr. Black's land is the best place for those hotels. So, the bottom line is, we can't take a chance. If this was to go ahead, I wouldn't put another nickel in the downtown of Revelstoke. And my wife and I do have our fingers in the number of pies here. We don't run anything. We don't have any talent for that. But we at least have the best funds here. So, I wouldn't put a nickel downtown because it would be a gamble. And I urge the council not to gamble either. Thank you.
Peter Bernanke.
Suspicious. Good afternoon and thanks, Mayor Councilors. It's only appropriate, Polish diet follows the Ukrainian, I guess. I'm for the development. I have a vision for this town that is going to hit probably twelve thousand people one day. And it's not going to affect the stores like some people said before, it's the drugstores. They're still going to retain the customers. I'm not going to go to that new drugstore just because he's out there. We'll support the people that were good to us. Malcolm, I buy a pair of boots there every month and a half, it seems like. You know, we'll all support you as well. And like you were saying, when you come from Toronto, you set the business up in a corner, similar to that. You know, I figured that's doomed to fail, but yet it's prospering. Prospering businesses increase the flow and generate interest in town. Everybody in town wants a town that's solid. They want to develop, grow. Right now, and I would say another thing about the developer. Anybody that's got that kind of vision to come to our town, bring that kind of money, I'm definitely backing you. And the city will back you. They're just, they're scared downtown. And I could see that. There's a bit of a learning curve going to happen. But, you know, we're blessed to have people like you, with people like Pat, that bring an income to our town. And we're grateful for that. So I urge the people to treat you fairly, honestly, provide whatever they can, work with the staff. And I'm sure they will, because we cannot afford to turn any more business away like that. And I'll keep supporting, I myself will keep buying stuff here in town. And it's a project that has to go. Thank you very much, Eric.
The next person on the list, I can't read the last name, but it looks like Yuri, the first name?
Would be me.
Three more names I've got, I guess.
I'm on our council. My name is Yuri. I'm a respected, I'm a recent resident of Revelstoke. And from past experience, I think it's inappropriate development because the town hasn't grown enough to accommodate another pharmacy and another grocery shop. And I mentioned, I mentioned Stittsville. I have spent a great part of time in a town called Carlton Place in Anamo. First strip mall, we ruined that town. And anybody who thinks they're going to survive on thirty, fifteen to thirty percent less food company in downtown is a junior. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Yuri. Make sure. So I've gone through the speakers list that people signed up for. I'm going to open the floor up for any comments from anybody that would like to come. Just come to the podium, state your name and your address. People from, that were on the original list are also welcome to come and give additional comments they would like. So, the floor is open for anybody that would like to use it. Michael?
Sorry to show up late, but my name is Michael Rooksill. I live at four fifty-seven Cedar Street. I don't want to speak up anymore time. I am against this proposal in a current fashion. I'm not against development in general, but strip malls on highways kill small downtowns. That's basically, a lot of people said it a lot better than I can. There are a lot of studies done, a lot of urban planning courses are out there. All of them say the same thing. This kind of development is a bad idea for a small town. For the person who benefits from it is the developer. That's it. My whole message.
Thank you.
Councilor, I have a question. Maybe ask a question. Absolutely. So, maybe just a little clarity. There's some figures thrown out by the developers how big this food and drugstore locations are going to be. If that, just a little clarity, I tried to get from you there. It is zoned retail, zoned commercial and can have retail. What size of square footage are they allowed to have for any type of retail?
Currently, or what's being proposed?
What we've already there, not what's proposed currently. So if we're not asking, if the developers weren't asking for this, how big a grocery store could they put in? Anything, or zero?
Well, they couldn't put a grocery store in.
They could put a convenience store, could they?
Mr. Strachan. They could look at a retail store. They would not be able to look at grocery because it's a separate use.
Okay.
The size limitation is the original size limitation. So it's based on the square footage of property.
Okay. So, probably a hundred eighty thousand square foot mega store could go in. But how, theoretically?
Actually, it would be a very different scenario. Restrictions on size were in reflection of the application. This C nine is not a size restriction.
Okay.
And adding these uses to this little district, which was part of our review and our analysis that they're likely should be some size restrictions. Which is why we see the restrictions for twenty-five thousand square feet for the grocery store and a ten thousand for the pharmacy. Other retail facilities, if they're ready to look at this site, would have existing zoning that allows for much bigger things.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And the current size of Cooper's is around twenty-five thousand square feet. And the size of the Alpant Village is around just short of sixty thousand square feet, which is basically the size of what this development is talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just surprised, Mr. Strachan, I always thought that any single building there was restricted to a maximum of twenty-five thousand square feet.
I thought that was something within the city of Revelstoke. I thought that was part of the strategy.
The membership, it was with the original proposal that Mr. Black had for development. There was proposals for restrictions on the square footage. However, as his proposal did not go through before adoption, those regulations were never incorporated into his own file.
I knew I saw it written somewhere.
It was proposed, but it didn't become part of it. So the restrictions would come forward only at the level of our resources.
Just a question, Mr. Strachan. The C nine allows for what type of retail to be built?
The membership, it allows for specific retail, which is listed as. The uses include the hotel, the motel, the restaurants, the uses that were associated with. The original proposal, there are other uses associated, including one that is a highway retail. The intent of the highway retail is to, or uses that would be associated with the travel of the public more oriented towards convenience. But there isn't a square footage limitation like there is for convenience stores. Main stores restricted to twenty-five hundred square feet. However, highway retail is not. And that definition is fairly open as to what that use would be. Grocery is specifically separated out. Others on the distance. So it's a use that could be added as a pharmacy. However, highway retail could be quite open.
You asked a long question. Okay.
I still don't understand the difference between highway retail and just general commercial. General commercial, I mean, if you wanted to build anything in town, general commercial, you could build any type of commercial building, right? Any business.
Yeah. And I don't think you can have a general commercial. Specifically broken apart into different zoning districts that have different associated uses. So these uses, both in the C four, which Mr. Black alluded to earlier, as well as the C nine, are oriented towards highway commercial uses. They list up convenience stores, hotels, restaurants, gas stations, things like that. And that's reflecting current development on that floor. The highway retail was added in as part of the C zone without limitations. So it would be permitted to be developed to the full extent within each parcel. If the parcels were consolidated, it could be significantly building. But because there's grocery and pharmacy that's being separated out as part of the uses, it wouldn't be permitted to be even one of those. But it could be another retailer that doesn't fit within that category, similar to what was proposed earlier this year.
The floor is open to any speakers that would like to address council. It's also, just to come up and state your name and your address if you haven't already spoken. You just don't have to go through the whole thing of introducing yourself. Most famous person in the world.
There's just one thing that this just came in. So this was not part of our conversations with members. This is part of the executive summary of the Business Retention and Expansion Study that was recently done in conjunction with the Futures and Economic Development. This will be presented on October twentieth at noon at the region at a chamber meeting. So, but it's kind of caught up the press. And there's three points here that I just thought would open to this conversation. One is about local workforce. And it says the area's currently experiencing recruitment challenges and includes sales, retail, food beverage service, and hospitality services. We did have comments in our coffee talks about the hotel staff and housing issues around that. The other is about facilities and equipment. And we're behalf of businesses plan to expand within three years, with ninety-seven percent of those indicating that expansion will occur within the community. And the other was business climate. And the point is, the most commonly sighted barriers to growth are the isolated location, the low population, and the development approval process. And because this is speaking about existing business, I believe that speaks to the development approval process that we used to have, that has, as I alluded to earlier, I think that's gotten better as far as renovating, upgrading, revitalizing, that kind of thing. So I just felt those three points were important to this conversation. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Jose from La Rama Baisao. I bake better than I talk to the speech. So, I wanted to say that, and I speak with Kevin too, that we are non-favor of the zoning amendment. And although, although I think development is a good thing, and I think something amazing on the highway would be on the highway would be great. Retail that we already have, or the world has way too much of anyway, is not really the way to bring people to Revelstoke. And we have so much here that people don't have anywhere. This is amazing town. I've lived here twenty-five years. I feel the same way now as I did then. It's amazing. And maybe we could get everybody together and think of something else that would generate money for a developer that is amazing. He says he's not available here if we don't want it. Like, who says that? You're either like, well, you don't know what's good for you. And we do know what's good for us. We live here. We go out of town because we don't have Walmart. The entire, all those ugly, ugly stores, they're necessary for us to buy things, but part of the reason we go out of town is because it's sunny. And you can make it sunny over there, like, it would be a good thing. And make it beautiful. It's a beautiful town. And there's nothing beautiful about any, like, story, but there's not really anything beautiful about strip malls. You know, I don't know, I don't know many examples. And downtown does that. And when we moved into, onto McKenzie ten years ago, five retail spots were empty, including where we are now. And that's only ten years ago. And it was bleak. And people were like, well, I don't know. Like, I mean, part of it was, you know, a major person moved out of downtown and people were like, well, they don't really need to go downtown anymore, you know, because this place is gone and that place is gone. And it has, you know, and we spent, you know, millions of dollars and so much of people's time trying to get people downtown, but not just downtown, but, you know, Revelstoke. So to put something on the highway where people will keep driving by, it doesn't really seem to make sense for Revelstoke. So I think, oh, and staffing. Like, how are we gonna staff so many places on the highway? We cannot really staff them here. I mean, unless you're living it, it is really difficult to get the staff, keep the staff, find them a good wage, find them a place to live, you know, keep them. We have great staff and, but really, we have a limited amount of skilled people here that, you know, can work in the specific, like, it's just like, for example, like finding bakers or finding chefs, like, for my industry, but there, you know, the doctors, nurses and everything. And so you have to train. And you're training all the time, and that means there's always, and people are, and people have their reasons why they're leaving, but there's just not enough people here. So you're training and it's exhausting and you can't assume that people will, that the small businesses here of, you know, we're all friends and acquaintances with everybody, but they will still be here. You know, it'd be really great to go to pharmacy and see Steven. He's like, hi, how are you? Like, I mean, you can't buy that in, in cities where you know everybody, right? You say, well, you know a lot. Oh, yeah, I know it's ten o'clock, Sunday night, didn't you even make me an elevated cake? Because I forgot, you know, my husband's birthday. Okay, they're calling you at home, right? So you can't, you can't assume, and you chip away at the margins that are, you know, that small business operate under. You just can't assume that they're always gonna be there. And so, you know, you might not, it might not be not that noticeable, but you will chip away at it. And so, you know, maybe people don't open at night anymore, or maybe they can't afford to hire somebody to open at night, or open on Sunday, or open seven days, or open at six AM, or, and so, though, I think that is, those things will not be immediately measurable. But it will be when things, you know, become empty downtown or empty wherever. And so, I, I think that it's, I think that if we just think of something else that would work, that would generate income and bring, I mean, we could do anything, really. We've got the people going by. We have the internet, Facebook. Like, I mean, really, if you built like, like the adventure park, but if you did an equivalent of the adventure park there, they will come. And if it's like classy and, and interesting and fun, which Rockstar already is, but, you know, so I don't know, maybe a competition of some sort. You know, it's like, I mean, you can do anything. You know, we have the money, we have the resources.
Thank you. We are interesting and fun, I can tell you that.
You build great cakes.
Good afternoon, your worship, councilors. Randy.
I look around the room and, like David, I think I'm probably one of the few people, maybe Lori in the back there, that are actually born and raised in Revelstoke. And I'm a chamber member and a local business person, and I think quite a long I lived here and I watched how many businesses have actually come and gone. And I can't think of anybody new or heard anybody in the room that's against development. I think we're all pro-development. I think the community needs it. I think a lot of your platforms that you guys ran on is pro-development. The question is, is this the right development? I've listened to a lot of things and I'm aware of a lot of information, and one of the challenges that I take as a local business person, you admitted that we sent thirty-seven testimonials to council. We got thirty-three or thirty-six out of three hundred chamber members that responded to the questionnaire we sent out. I guess the underlying question that I have is, how do we get more of the public's input on this? I reappreciate there's a lot of business people here, but I think there's a lot more people out there. And I don't know how we drag the horse to the trough, but if we got thirty-seven respondents out of a population over seven thousand, hopefully it's still there, I guess I have some concerns with respect to, are they just don't care? Are they pro or are they against? So, again, I'm pro-development, gentlemen, what we spoke before and they know that. I'm just not sure whether this is the right development. So my concern to this council and above at large is, we need a better input from the community with respect to whether or not this is the right development. Thirty out of seven thousand is correct, man. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Ladies and gentlemen, the floor is open. If anybody would like to approach the microphone.
Karen Powell, should the conversation help me? I'm for the elements. I believe it's a good thing and that we need, I think you picked the wrong one. One thing that concerns me is, is completely cut off from Revelstoke. So if I'm coming from Calgary and I drive in, I say, oh, look, there's Revelstoke, there's Tim Hortons, McDonald's, and I keep going. That you have drawn a picture that that is Revelstoke, and that's not what it is. And I think you're better off, it's bad business for you, it's bad business for me, and you have to go back and have another look and see what works for you and for us. Because without us working together, all of us are gonna fail again. And you have created a picture that is separate from us. You're surrounded by a train track, which is too bad. But you can't join us where you're sitting, doing what you want to do. So I think you should go back and look at it again. Thank you.
Kevin?
Hi, I'm Lori, this is from Community Futures. I actually don't intend to make an argument either for or against the project. I'd just like to address one argument that I've heard to support it. And that's because we have fear that nobody will ever come and develop here again if we turn this down. I've been business counseling for nineteen years in this town, and I can tell you that when somebody comes to me and they have a, an idea they want to propose, and it's because they feel desperate or they feel there's a limited time offer and so forth, they're gonna make mistakes. So the fear that nobody's ever gonna wanna do business with us again, I think is the worst reason in the world to support. And I really don't have a real strong community of needs, but I think that's really important on my journey.
Thanks, Kevin.
I believe that people, if they can explain, they'll come with another project, so.
Glenn O'Radley again?
I'm still a host.
A couple of points I wanna touch on. We've kind of, the general consensus is this not, this is not the development for this site. So we need to determine what is. Now, we're not gonna solve that here tonight, but there are a few points I wanna kind of touch on that people have actually brought forward, which are very valid. So we need to look at the site. Mr. Platt had a vision for that site. The site is very unique, including the highway and the train tracks. Now, I'm gonna say Rocky Mountain Air, you're all gonna roll your eyes, have you been there? Have you done that? But we haven't put that to bed yet. So if we waste this opportunity and this unique site on a strip mall, and then one day the rack manager says, well, geez, well, sorry, we've lost that opportunity. So, with regards to hotel chains, so that is the best use for that site, is hotel chains. I've done some research myself, this well-spoken gentleman discussed hotel chains. I've found hotel chains that have gone to small communities, resort communities that are smaller than ours, and have spent tens of millions of dollars building beautiful hotels. The question is, have we gone out and found them? Because these communities, that's what they did. They went looking for hotel chains. They didn't come to them. And that's a point I was trying to stress earlier. It is up to us to go out and find these people and bring them to our community. So we need to look at what is the best hotel chain to make this work and bring a functional, practical hotel, resort hotel to this site. Because that would be doing more to bring tourists to downtown in the strip mall. So, thank you, Randy.
Your worship, council. My name is Brett, I'm always talking about the lady. Lauren Rice here, representing a number of businesses, chairman of the Economic Development Commission. You guys have got a tough decision to make. The decision that, one of the things that's happened is that Dean will speak to. The decision is about whether to allow a grocery store and pharmacy and health and wellness. That's the question you guys have to ask here, that's what the question is. Unfortunately, what's happened in the business world is that it's come to a thing of, are we open or are we closed for business? And we need to be, as a community, getting, starting to get pretty concerned about this because we need to progress with time. Pretend that you jumped on an airplane from Europe and you'd never been here before and you landed in Calgary and you rented a Canada Dream RV. Then you came to Revelstoke because you heard that this is the place to go. So you drove on the Trans-Canada Highway and you come down the hill and you got the red light there at first lane. So you look to the right, you've got a business that's been struggling, well, we'll go past that. Well, we've got a graveyard, well, we'll go past that. We've got a abandoned oil company lot, ooh. Now there's a gas station, so we're across the bridge, oh, we're through town. That's backup. Maybe we'll go back to that red light and we'll look to the left. So we've got this beautiful piece of rock that could be developed. It's unfortunate for the developers that the word strip mall has been used all the time, because I saw the artist concept outside, and we could have a pretty nice, we have the ability as a community to help guide this gentleman to make the facility blend with our community. There's no reason why if you stop there and you're sitting in the park and a lot of this development that this gentleman wants to do, and it's a day like today, hey, that's Mount Revelstoke. That'd be cool. And that's Mount McKenzie. And there's Boulder, and there's Spryby. Like, we could have a kiosk in there with some tourism and we could, maybe we could work together with the developer and get a walkway from over the rail museum in downtown. I can tell you, I do a lot of walking, as my friend knows because I buy a lot of booze. It's ten minutes from that site to downtown. That's not too far. And if there's a walkway, a shortcut in the museum, it might be seven. So we're at the red light now, we're coming down the hill in the RV and the field is blank, it's empty, and then there's an empty oil company lot, and then there's a subway, good business inside, a pretty good lot that we've been building for the fifty years I've been here. And then another empty oil company lot, and then we have our intersection that heavy forbid you wanna turn left between eleven o'clock and three o'clock, we need to have a corner. And next note, you're across the bridge. So I think it's about ninety seconds, if you hit all greens, from the time you can see town to the time you're through. So you have that ninety seconds to stop somebody that's never been here before in their life, and that's what they just saw as they're coming through. Maybe this isn't the development to build, the grocery store and pharmacy, but the thing we need to get out is that we're open to development. We can't keep saying, no, no, no. These gentlemen wanna spend some money here, it's their prerogative to spend their own money to build a business. If they think they can make it, that's what free enterprise is about. I'm pro-development, whether, I mean, a tough decision without a doubt, but let's think about the future. Like, oh, we need to get more taxes here. Are we scared of growth? Are we scared to have more people? I know there's this thing, where are they gonna put the people? Where are they gonna put their staff? Well, that, those are all things that if the developer wants to build, he's gonna have to figure that out. And if, if we wanted to become a community that's gonna progress, we need to work on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Floor is open, ladies and gentlemen. David?
I'm less nervous now, so.
Oh, okay.
There's something that kinda stuck in my, kinda, my quill when I was, when the developers were first up, and it just kinda rolled around my head and stooping over the whole meeting. And you kinda said, we looked at the town, we know what the people like and we know what they don't like, which kinda said to me, well, is that why you're duplicating core businesses, to pull them off? I mean, I, there's, there's no secret that pharmacy is my primary interest, that the town is of my interest, but, you know, pharmacy is where I feed my kids, it's how I, it's where my litter comes from. And a ten thousand plus worth of pharmacy, that's a huge animal. You don't really see a lot of people grabbing by with prescriptions. They don't tend to get to Calgary and say, well, you know what, I'm gonna get my Canada Dream RV, drive until I hit the first pharmacy on the highway and get them, it's gonna have to eat a slice of a very finite pie in order to be financially, economically viable. And I can tell you, when they talk about fifteen to thirty percent, I'm on the fifteen percent side of that. If I lose fifteen percent of my business, I'm out of business. That's just the facts of it. And I don't expect council to, to, to mother me or feel sorry for me. It's just a fact, right? I mean, I actually bought this pharmacy out from underneath with the right first refusal from Rexall Pharmacy, because I didn't think that a large corporate pharmacy was right for our town. It just, it didn't seem well to me for my customers or, or working for them, or for my vision of how I think customer service in pharmacies should be. I mean, I also like to point out that my wife doesn't even work in town, she works at Savonarm. The easiest thing in the world for us to do would be to move to Savonarm, there's a million pharmacies there, I could go job, just like that. Instead, she drives every day back and forth, winter time included, which also makes me very nervous. So, I, I really think there's a very finite pie, and this is a big, big operation. It's gonna need to be fed, I mean, the, the square foot lease on that alone, community and I could ask for three times the square footage of my entire pharmacy, bathroom, bathroom, everything included. I mean, that's a big, big operation. To feed that animal, it's, it's gonna have to keep business from the community. There's no way that, because pharmacy is heavily weighted towards their prescription medicine sales for economic viability. So, I mean, you can have all of the front store stuff in the world, but if you don't have a, a strong dispensary, you're not gonna be economically viable. Because you're not gonna attract pharmacists who are also working for bargaining basement prices, you know, with the cost of living and all these other things, you, you have to pay them out, and they're a major expense. I mean, it's, it really concerns me. It also concerns me that people keep talking about, well, we're gonna prevent people from going out of town. Guess what? I'm from town, I love going out of town, just for a pre-hire every once in a while. I don't think you're gonna really prevent people from going out of town unless you put in those large box stores, which is not really what we're talking about. We're talking about, you know, twenty-one thousand square foot grocery store, we're not talking about a Walmart, or those places that people go as a destination. I mean, people are still gonna want me to tell them, oh, this is stretch their legs. What else do I have? And I, the last thing I kinda wanted to mention was, I know that developers are the nicest guys in the world, and I'm sure that they, they feel like, you know, it's probably good for the town, but it's also really good for them. But you gotta think about it this way, what is the real economic drive? Once a person's pulled off the highway, spent a few bucks in, in the mall, I won't use the term strip mall, because every season I don't think that's bad, and, you know, they've had maybe a deal in the restaurant, now they picked up some liquor, hopefully not to drive it, they're in, you know, they've gotten their stuff. Where's the economic driver for that development to send people downtown when there's a duplication of poor businesses? If they're just stopping the town, that's a direct kind of conflict with what they're selling. I mean, I'm not gonna have somebody come into my pharmacy and say, you know, you should probably check out the one on the highway. You know, it's a nice highway development, they spent a lot of money making it look like cobstones and fitting our, the kind of look of our community. It's just not in my economic interest. It, it hurts my viability to have somebody go to a place where they sell things that I sell. I mean, the only pharmacy that I will sell somebody to is Steve, and that's because he's the nicest guy that ever lived. I did train you well. It's just, it seems foolhardy to think that, you know, we keep hearing, you know, well, we're gonna drive people to town and we're gonna prevent them from, you know, coming to town. Guess what? I stopped in an RV, picked up all my stuff, heard this was the nicest town in the world, looked at the intersection. If I stopped in an RV, picked up all my stuff, heard this was the nicest town in the world, looked at the intersection, I would just keep driving. Even if I had been marketed with kiosks, all this kind of stuff. It's just, it, it, I think it's foolhardy to really think, we've all been there, we all drive past things, you know, we just, you get where you need and you go. I mean, I just feel like it's a, I feel like there's room in town for two pharmacies, and I don't even feel like there's room in town for two pharmacies of that size. And it's, it's huge. That is a massive amount of retail space. So, yeah, it keeps me up and it makes me a little concerned from a very selfish standpoint, but not to admit it would be, would be deceiving you guys. Because you guys know I'm very vested in this. And the only pharmacies of that size that move in, I can tell you, it's not a kid who just graduated from U V C. It will be a large national change. We have, there's all sorts of rumors floating around town, but it, it would have to be. I mean, just to stock that thing will be millions of dollars in stock. So thi- this is not a small, you know, mom and pop operation, it will be a large corporate operation. And it's just going to, it's going to need to eat, and it's going to have to eat a slice of that finite pie. There's less people living here today than when I was sixteen, no doubt about it. I mean, seven thousand and change, that's not a ton of people. And unless we see some sort of massive explosion, even the two hundred people, if they all have asthma and are brightest, are not going to, we'll see some prescription base enough to support that third pharmacy. I just think it's, it's a shame that we're not talking about what we should put up there or what we could put up there that would benefit the community as a whole. We're not kind of arguing whether or not it's fair to say, you know, this will put me out of business or that's, or this, that, or the other thing. It's just, it, it just doesn't seem to fit with, with the community mentality of invest in your community, invest your own money. I've invested mine and my future. It, it just doesn't seem right that a large corporate entity can come in and eat off a huge piece of that pie. And I know it's free market, but it just doesn't seem right. It doesn't sit with me. Those are my two cents, and maybe a bit extra.
Will you be available to you?
Yeah, just, I have to go, I just want to make one, you know, just sitting here and listening to all this, it seems to me like we've got a lot of division. If I'm a councilor, if I'm in your chair, I'm thinking, oh my God, no matter which way I, what I do here, it's kind of awful. And if you're a developer, it can't be feeling too good either. And I was very taken by your comment that you don't want to build something people don't.